Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call on order the public hearing on the Cambridge Bridge intersection recommendations. Does anybody have anything that they would like to talk about? What they would like to see there? The state has recommended, or the police have recommended, two things, that the speed should be between thirty-three and thirty-nine miles an hour. And that we should install either three stop signs or remove one of the yield signs and replace it with a stop sign, so you'll be three stop signs. Those are the recommendations from sheriff and state, is that right?
That's correct.
So, Zayn, what would anybody like to say?
Well, I'm fine with either scenario, but I will say coming from Athens and coming from Rockingham, both those speed limit signs say carry miles per hour. So I didn't know if you want to talk with either of the towns and try to have a consistent speed limit.
For Cambridge?
For Cambridge. So as you're entering Cambridge Court, it's thirty miles per hour. As you're coming from Athens, there was thirty miles per hour sign and just consistently between the.
Those Athens are thirty-five.
Originally, before you changed it to the twenty-five mile per hour sign, it was a thirty mile per hour sign. And it was thirty miles per hour all throughout Cambridge Court. When we just, when we fought with the sheriff's office about it, there, he really wanted to see it just be one thirty-five mile per hour for the entire village or town and village.
Therefore, you might want to discuss with Rockingham.
I'm just curious what the findings were for the study.
What do I?
What the findings were for the traffic study.
Not just the general.
I don't know what the findings were. Zayn, I know. I don't think that we do in court.
It's geometric.
Let me pull it up.
Findings were, because I picked up on others, the findings were because the traffic going in all three directions are similar, just about similar, even the geometric of the bridge that they want a three-stop sign. But coming from Athens into that intersection is twenty-five. Coming from Rockingham into the bridge at thirty. But we could put a sign wherever from Rockham because as soon as you get over the bridge, the next one is going up there against the property. And then the sign you put Rockham to the bridge is forty past our property, after the intersection, until you get to the end of our property, we can go to the north to the south.
Yeah, that's also why the sheriff said he wished that the entire building was just thirty-five like Athens. It's because we have three different speed limits at this intersection between five and thirty.
Find it, morning?
No, not yet.
We didn't know it was supposedly supposed to be twenty-five until Morgan showed that information to us. Because of course.
We have no problems with the recommendations.
Which recommendation?
Thirty-five sign because they're not going thirty-five now anyway, they're still going fifty-five, sixty-five.
It's when we have.
The sheriff's deputy that is contracted that's been at our house, he's basically indicated that he gives people a fifteen mile per hour grace. And that since, since it goes from thirty-five to twenty-five, he doesn't think that's fair. But he does sit on the Athens line, and he sits on the Athens side when they're, I'm paying for them to be out there. And he pulls people over left and right when he's out there. But I, and from our opinion, though, he's never out there when the highest, if you're trying to hide traffic's out there. On average, we have more than a hundred vehicles past our house every day between four AM and between four AM and four eight. But it's, I, it, I'm being generous by saying a hundred cars, it's well over a hundred cars. But it's, we don't have a problem with the recommendations. Because some of the people that do travel daily have begun to slow down. One of the teenagers that was full rolling our house had stopped and he is no longer doing what he was doing in front of our house. He does do it through Cambridge Court.
And has our house protected.
But that's neither here nor there. Yeah.
We've noticed that too.
No, we just document and inform the VSP is all I can say.
Everybody can check with, with having the speed limit thirty-five or everywhere. Is that something that, that is okay?
As long as it's enforced.
Everybody else okay with the thirty-five?
As long as it's enforced, and I think our problem has a tendency is that we contract the sheriff's department for eight hours a month, which is approximately, think about the hours that the roads are really being used, five-thirty to nine-thirty, and we're contracting the sheriff's department for our whole town, two percent of the operating. I would like to see an increase to about ten percent, so contract the sheriff's office to allow hours. In about forty-eight hours. And see what it does, we have a speed issue in this Athens, not a talking. Well, it's also twenty-five, only twenty-five percent of the people currently stop at that stop sign. Fifty percent roll and twenty-five percent do not stop at all. And we've seen so many, I'm sorry, go ahead. So we're going to increase it pretty. So I know that the Department of Transportation has recommended a mock-up or a sketch of where exactly you can put the stop signs, where exactly you're going to strike it. And then we need to enforce the speed limit in this town, not just down in the Cambridge Court. For the area, we need to increase it all over town. We all know that when we travel backwards to West Brom, we slow down. And the reason is that every time you go down that road, one out of four times, one out of five times, you see a sheriff there. So if you travel that road, you go this speed limit. And until we get people in this town going this speed limit or being the sheriff stopping them for not going this speed limit, we're going to have a scene, and there will be a serious accident at that intersection. And I'm going to be the first one there. And there's no cell towers there. So they're going to become knocking at our door. So you're going to act the ordinance that has been recommended by the Department of Transportation and the sheriff's office. You got to increase the sheriff's department in this town.
Well, there's no way you can increase the sheriff until we do the budget. Because we, and this year's budget is set for, I forget how many hours it is. But, but we can certainly, when we start our budget negotiations in October, we certainly can increase that. If that's what is consensus. We try to keep the budget, you know, and we don't want to keep the budget. We don't want to go crazy, so you know, sometimes you just have to look at that. So if that's an important issue, then that's something we should take into consideration when we sit down and not go.
But if you're going to, you're going to put an ordinance in town, it's going to lap to you. And you're going to create more, more of a situation danger drive. I see it coming through to that intersection. I see it when, when, when people pass me, they're like, and I'm going, people are passing. You know, it's the speed, or you know, I'm going, people are passing, you went down the road.
Oh, I mean, I, I've seen, but they go from town at forty-five, fifty miles an hour, I mean, I think it's a problem everywhere.
And you need to enforce it. And it's not high enough, or fifty miles per hour for the sheriff to hold the motor.
There's, we have, I guess, you were asking about the results of the speed study?
Yeah.
So it was, it was done on May ninth, May fifteenth, starting at one-ten on the ninth and ended at two-thirty-three on the fifteenth. And at that time, six thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine vehicles went by. Four of them were over sixty miles per hour, twelve fifty-five to sixty, seventy-nine fifty-one, fifty-five miles per hour, three hundred and sixty-three, forty-six to fifty miles per hour, one thousand four hundred and fourteen, forty-one to forty-five miles per hour. The largest segment of thirty-seven percent of the cars, two thousand, two thousand five hundred and eighty-nine, going thirty-six to forty miles per hour, thirty-one to thirty-five miles per hour was twenty-three percent, one thousand six hundred and four vehicles, twenty-six to thirty, five hundred and eighty-nine, under twenty-six, we're in fifteen.
And that's a very much, that's a twenty-five mile per hour.
So composed at thirty, thirty-five, that's approximately sixty-four percent of the population, but exceeding thirty-five mark.
I'm getting late, so I don't know if we're talking about stuff.
No, not yet. Don't have it, but go ahead.
We'll speak, we'll speak to it.
Feel free.
And the numbers can be skewed, they're asking, but they could be, the majority, ninety percent of people are doing speeding. All it takes is one asshole going ninety miles an hour, T-bone. That's all it takes. The part of the stop signs, I just wanted to point out, when we changed it and it went from the Athens side of thirty-five to the bridge, that's all we heard when we came in was trucks. Are we going to, I was trying to turn it, now you can put three stop signs, dating Taylor, Jay, right, that has got a blocking trust. Who's got the right, they can't swing wide? Because if they're stopped where they should stop, the truck's got to back up in all directions. So two D cluster, that's all I'm saying about some stuff. No line cars stuck behind trucks, are they going to have to back up? Going to happen, right now, everybody knows it works even. There, there are people that don't respond to traffic in their inheritance and for making us all fucker for it. I see trucks with problems. They look, they see someone coming from Rockham, they saw why the back of Rockham gets away with my close accident, but they're all stuck at a stop sign. How are they going to turn it up here? Just explain that one.
Well, I, I, I technically, I don't like the three-stop signs personally, I think that's, I think they're overkill. But that's what the recommendation is for two-stop signs. But right now, there's one-stop sign and a yield. And it's been that way for how long ago? Forever.
The yield sign was breaking our property, so if you're doing thirty-five, by the time you get a good sign, part of the T-bones, someone coming across the bridge. But that was put back a hundred yards and below yield to bridge traffic. I don't know how dumb you have to be if you know bridge traffic is coming from the left.
I almost got T, what was it last, we almost got T-bone, someone didn't yield, they just.
Because they don't know where the yield is from, you don't get bridge traffic. It's a hundred yards to slow down and walk, and then went that instead, since we moved in that sign kind of from our house, I can, but then you see it. We yield to garden, no, we're.
In our experience, people don't move into water, that's a very rich, they just.
We see it come back and walk. And you slid mine.
But what does it sentence, I mean, is everybody like, the two-stop signs or the three-stop signs, they're leaving it where it is? I mean, we have to have some kind of direction here, I know that that's what the recommendation was, three-stop signs or two-stop signs and yield.
So two, right, and one would have to go on the bridge, one would have to be on thirty-five.
So the, the recommendations, the stop control with the north and south lights. That's the right now on the bridge.
Now, we have trucks parking, someone from the bridge is right away.
Now, we have an official recommendation from the state. If you don't take one of these recommendations, we, if we pick up that, I believe. Does have, that'd be one of my concerns, I'm not a lawyer, but if I was, if someone hired me and said, I just got T-bone there, there was no stop sign there, I did not hit my head on that.
Yeah, we are, we've been put on looks. With this study, we've been put on notice about from the state, what the safest way to address the situation is.
I would think so. I would say three, that, thank you. And within three months, you'll have enough more than we belong. So no three-stop signs, you don't live there, we do, we live right.
We don't have to have three, we have two.
No, let's go three, I get two. A truck comes across the bridge, goes to take a left. If you take it right across the bridge, you're going to pull up or it's seasons on the bridge, but the truck ain't market, you're going to be a trucker there.
Which, touch that, I found on the bridge.
Their recommendation is not, no, yeah, just stop signs like this, no stop signs in the bridge. People coming across from Sack and Hurricane, or if right away, left and right, it's like two trucks, one truck stuck at the stop signs. They got to back up to let this guy smooth the wire. And it's common sense, I don't need your opinion.
What the recommendation is the stop signs, north and south lights are flashing underneath, advised in the traffic from the right, left is not.
And that's the study recommendation, the third recommendation is three-stop signs.
That's right, that's correct. So we're struggling.
So we don't get to.
I would just add that, that lines be painted, because they're having to do the lines at the stop sign every year, yield sign years.
And, and just whenever it's done, please, new traffic, ever.
We're, we're, we have, we tried to find somebody to do the painting. And, John, you want to address that?
We start trying to find somebody, we ran into problems with the signs being switched every five minutes.
Right.
There was no standard, painting lines. So at that point, we're trying to find out what everybody wants, then we'll paint lines.
Yeah. The, the thing, the, the thing you did, you want to paint the lines to stop sign. But you don't want to paint it, and then it's going to take them away again, yes, so that was the whole.
So I would also suggest maybe for the, for the Department of, Department of Transportation, exactly where those stop signs go. So then do a mock-up, a sketch, exactly where they should go.
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem. I mean, I, I think they're the ones who should make the recommendations, not us.
I'm, I agree.
Makes that it wouldn't, makes that it wouldn't do that. If you're interested.
If it comes down to someone who knows a lot, they just, they're always in it, and they know how to use it, they're, what's to say that everybody goes to the stop sign at the same time, and they're all irritated, and someone pulls out, no, they didn't follow correctly, the correct. It's interesting, when you say like, stop sign was never here, all of a sudden it's got T-bone, almost down.
Right?
I do think it's actionable, I guess.
I mean, to me, a perfect war would be, you have a sign saying yield the bridge traffic, and then strike the road fifty yards ahead of that, yield ahead. Need to stop sign where it currently is. Kind of according to the rules, that's all, I mean, just blocking yardage, that's what you would want in charge of it. And if it's a matter, if it comes down to matters, someone gets sued, every road in this town could be up and up and red, that's, so now that is like.
Any other comments? Anybody here?
No, we made a good point about the speed, I do hear that a lot from a lot of people, people speeding in time. I think you're right, we should probably address that when the project comes up, maybe. Put it on the town for this year or something, and see if there's an app. Because it's a race, people have to do it.
No, I agree.
Well, I love it. I just have one more comment. When you go to Sack and River, we all see the flashing going in, and then from the other way, it goes all to the flashing, so. I don't know if they bought those, yeah. But they could see signs that are pertinent to the village, with the mark where you can see coming down at twenty-five. The village is twenty-five, and it tells you that you're going too fast. I'm sure, is Rockham, is Rockham, it's not this.
Well, it's rich, or are you, you know, all the money at Sack? Two years ago, that was on, on the warnings. And it was up to the, the town to approve that, was it expensive, I don't remember, seven thousand dollars.
Eight grand, it's awful, I think, right?
Seven thousand dollars, and, and the town voted it down. So.
I recall you guys wanted by two of my thing.
Yeah, we wanted by two of them, and left it up to the people. And, you know, town leaders, and they voted it down, so we did that, and we. Going again, but the reason is that they didn't want these electronic signs in the village, or whatever, so that was the.
Was it voted down because of replacement of them?
No, they just didn't want the sign.
Had it pulled in town, no other.
Period, that was a good shot, you know?
They didn't want it in the village. It's so good, if we were to put it in. That's what I'm saying.
We put it up in Charlotte, we tried, we spent entertaining, for the, for the Cambridge Court, not irritating, and what? It happens, looking on Norman's old park, and playing all night, not irritating.
Well, that's something we, we had to think about, you know, some, some budget, and again, put it, put it on the, on the, the warnings, and let's see what happens in town. Any other comments? Anybody from the board?
I'd like to see the three-stop sign.
No. If not, then I'll, I'll call the public hearing. But yeah, unless there's additional comments that you may get here. All right.
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, somebody make a motion to adjourn the public hearing, please. Have any of the, the stadium under speeding down?
We will.
Well, we will, as soon as we get out of the. I'm going to adjourn the public, maybe, in a second. All favors, they are, I don't think any. All right, and what will happen is we'll go into a meeting, and the first item will be the board to make the decision how to, what to treat the. So we're calling the meeting to order at what is it, five?
Twenty-two.
Five twenty-two on July seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Immediately after the public hearing at the town hall in Rappahannock. We need a motion to adopt the agenda, and we made one addition, and that would be, would be three A. Would be the action of the traffic ordinance. So somebody make a motion to accept the agenda. If not, all favors say aye, 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 aye. Okay. The next item is the minutes of the regular meeting of July fifth. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented?
None for me.
None.
If not, somebody make a motion to approve the regular minutes of July fifth. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all favors say aye, aye, aye. Okay, then we have, the next item is the approval of the emergency meeting on July tenth. Are there any additions or corrections to go? If not, somebody make a motion to accept those minutes.
Sorry.
Well, any discussion, not all favors say aye, 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 aye. Okay. All right, so now, we, now it's, it's time for the board to take action on the traffic ordinance act. What is the board's plan?
I see three stop signs, and then you speak on the three buck.
I'll go along with it.
I'd rather see the, whatever the, the, they've managed, recommended, I'd like to see that. The two of that, I think.
Well, they give us two options, three or two. If there, I guess, if there's, the issue was being brought about the trucks coming off the bridge and being able to turn, right? That was from the trucks from the bridge, if they had to stop, or if they're going to turn, is that the issue, or?
I don't know, I wonder what that is, how many times has it happened?
Your truck riders on that.
What, you, is that a problem?
If there was a vehicle sitting, if you were coming across the bridge with a truck in a trailer or a dark trailer, and there was somebody else sitting in the other side coming from Rockham at a stop sign, if the stop sign was too close to the intersection, definitely would be, they're pretty caught.
So we're going to have to put the stop sign over the back, when we're the yield.
I don't know if you see anybody on either side, I don't have that. I can see that being a problem. I don't think anyone puts stop signs back, it's not like that could be any way to meet some. That's where that line would be on the road. You would probably have the same problem if you were coming from Athens and trying to turn on the bridge. You know, you're, you're pretty limited on space to make a swing. It would, it would be tight, at least coming from, from Rockingham to turn to Rockham, definitely be tight to make that turn. I do not, I can't go without swinging out on the other one.
Someone from Rockingham to Rockham.
You can't come across that bridge with a trailer behind you, to the truck, without getting into the other way, there's my wire.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm kind of, I'm trying to go with the three-stop signs. And that, not having one on the bridge. Because of that, of the problem. You know, having to put a truck or trailers.
After what these guys just said, I mean, I'm fine with either my first, that was go with the first recommendation, what they, we tried to say. But honestly, I'm fine with the.
They gave us, I mean, they gave us the option of either three or two. So whatever we, whatever we said, we're, we're okay.
I mean, in my mind, I mean, two makes more sense, it's still sort of a natural stop coming over the bridge. You're going into.
At least you look over to the left, yeah, yeah, right.
And if you have the directional markers, well, the stop signs tell anybody about the traffic on the bridge, it doesn't stop, I think. I'm in front of the two stop signs.
And I guess the only other thing is, I mean, I don't know what, what we can actually do about it. For a consistent speed limit down in that area town, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have one twenty-five, one thirty. I don't know how you fix that, but.
It's like, oh, the thirty-five. Yeah, the only thing you would have to have is a start point of that thirty-five, like, you know, the town lines, obviously, from Athens and Rockingham. But we're back towards Rockham, and we do want to start, we're slowing people down before they come into the intersection. That's what you go to, I think. But the state, they can tell us where they could go, I think. Yeah, right, I believe it. Yeah, so I think, I think we need to go to them for the, for later another science. It's what, four, you're right now, always Rockham. Yeah.
Well, you do it on Chester Hill, it's forty, and then drops down to thirty-five.
It's funny, it starts dropping down back to, right, order. Yeah, they decide, they set it, speed, you know, speed zone, but I forget what it said. Somebody make a motion to do something here?
I'll make a motion for two-stop signs coming from the north and the south of thirty-five mile per hour speed limit.
Second. Any, any other discussion, faculty, you're everywhere, three-person, person, so.
No, I understand your logic here, with the trucks.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, somebody make a motion to accept, says, I mean, second, second, sets, second set. There's no women's guy. Everybody favor of the three-stop signs, two-stop signs, walking south. And then.
Two, or four, miles an hour.
Say aye, 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 aye. Close. Okay. All right, well, thank you all for coming.
And we're not changing here again.
And I hope that, I hope that this works.
I would just like to revisit in three, six months, if there's any accidents, could see that's repeating on how many for that backup on the bridge, if I could, well, I drive it many times.
That's fine, come, yes.
I think, I think that would be a, a good thing to have.
And I, I, we, the select board, when we start our budget negotiations, will consider, perhaps, to, to increase the hours.
Yeah, I would say, well, I think it's very important.
Okay, thank you all for coming, you're welcome to say. The next one is the primary. The next one is the primary contract for W R C United Way for the parking.
Remember when he was here and he just wanted a primary.
Oh, someone to talk to.
Yeah, like a. Communicator between the select board and.
I'm gonna make, make suggestion that maybe since Seth and I are on the committee, why don't we vote jointly? Because if it's just one person, somebody's out of town or, or busy or whatever, so. If they would accept the two, I'm going to leave it out. Is that okay to everyone? Do we need a motion tonight? And I said, somebody make a motion that Seth and I would be the primary contract with uh W R C.
Uh I'll make a motion.
If there's no discussion, all favors say aye, aye, close. The next one is Victor Rose's COVID. You know, wash it off and it's strong. Distributed the, the tree down and there was burning from then. It's still scheduled. During the before, it has not been a little way to do it.
I don't think FEMA is gonna do anything. But there's going to be anything to the poll.
We, we can try for mitigation, but I, I. Refuses some mitigation around everything and maybe say no.
Was there any grants from, since it's a, that barn's historical? We're gonna be applying for the same grant that we were refused this year. And I can figure a good chance we'll get it and that's probably next year.
Then we're gonna work with you on it also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there was some problem whether we should buy the COVID now or not.
Yeah, because if you don't find a public, probably gonna be thousand, fifteen hundred dollars more.
I think at the last meeting, we decided not to buy it. So. So we wanted to visit.
Well, I don't think there was a decision. I think it was we were gonna revisit it. Uh and Mike and Kim looked at the budget. I don't know if you want us to be going on.
Well, after all figured we're done, I did end up with probably seventeen thousand. For the good of, of his budget.
So you want to say what? So you think you should buy it this year and then have it in stock occasionally?
I think I would, especially with the supply and the demand right now.
How much is the COVID itself?
No, around one, eleven or eleven thousand, I think. Somewhere in there.
That would be headers, it's not your bill fourteen.
Yeah, I think. You just find the COVID, the headers I can get anytime. The COVID is at least a month past.
Which the capital budget are you having seven thousand seventy-five in anyways for the twenty-four, twenty-five?
So the, the money comes available sooner, we'll have a COVID, put it in, if not, then we're gonna wait two, three months to order anyway.
And if FEMA, some miracle thing and they give us a mitigation that will have a COVID and we can do it before winter, so. So somebody make a motion that we buy the. Over. What are you making a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay, second, not second. Any further discussion or thinking about?
Yeah, Morgan does successful in getting the grid because we pre-bought it. Does that mean anything?
No, no.
Okay.
They actually recommended to buy it.
Yeah.
Did buy that, yeah, okay, all right.
Why can't you just borrow the money and do it?
We borrow the money? We don't have it in the budget.
It seems to me maybe Seth can, can address.
But I think that, I think that's another problem too, is the time. I don't think, I don't have the ability to do it this year.
Well, it may mean that you have to put something on. In order to do this. It seems to me Seth can, can get in on this, but. Dick has brought to your attention that there's a problem. And then you sent the, the wrong department out and he agrees there is a problem. So now that you're not doing anything about it, you begin, I think, to run into negatives. If Dick takes your report. It seems to me that he's got to take, say, hey, you're negative, didn't do a damn thing about it. And he's, he's liable to sue you also for the damage to his buildings, for the damage to whatever is inside his building. And if I were you, I'd go for punitive damages. But that's, that's just me. I, I really don't understand. Kim explained to us a couple of meetings ago. That she's about to have to go up and get a couple of hundred thousand to cover the, the big grids that we're building. Why not just go ahead and, and borrow the thirty-six grand? Doctor Mike can say, Michael, if something's got to be put off, so we can take their problem right now, get it fixed and avoid future liability. It seems to me the longer you wait to do this, the worse the problem gets and the higher your liability becomes. You're, you're entitled to, it's not the red board, you're empowered, empowered. To make such loans, every year at town meeting, we say, yeah, you can borrow against tax. So I don't see what's holding you on.
Well, just before myself, I mean. I think we have a budget that we're supposed to be living by or at least trying to get. And we get emails almost weekly, if not even more, of different spots in town that. People think it's a town's responsibility for whatever and. We can't stomp out every little fire. I mean, we just, we wouldn't, wouldn't be able to do it. I don't think that'd be the fiscal responsibility. Way to say it.
Now, I don't know how many more public authorities we have that are not good enough. We're causing the same amount of damage. So if we do one, do we continue on and do two, three, four?
Well, I think there's a program now to do. You know, an ongoing program to replace boats. Your corporate budget in the highway department is seven thousand dollars a year. That's what we have to replace. Any over debts failed or otherwise in a year's time, which is not a lot of money.
No.
So you're, you spend seven, eight hundred dollars just to replace one cross, which takes two cohorts. You, so it's, it's a challenge.
So there again, I think you've got to look at that and say, wait, right, we've got to re-crease that budget for, for several years.
That's inevitable, but.
Well, I, 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 I can't, I can't disagree that I think. This year, when we sit down on COVID and start on the budget. Yes, I think we're gonna have, have to take a hard look at a lot of the things because of the cost. And, and, and Eric, there's no question about it that we're just gonna have to reduce. The budget, it's just gonna increase the taxes. That's just no question about it. You, you can't live this way and not, and I, not continue to. Spend more money, fix the problems. But like, I, you know, I understand Dick the rooster, but we, like John said, I mean, we have so many other. Not huge cohorts like I'm thinking, but like there's so many other coverage areas that needed to be replaced. That we would have to borrow, I don't know how much money to do that. And, and at times. Before the flood, uh. Mike said they didn't have the time to do that. Now with the flood, I don't even show they have time to deal with it. They have to finish it.
I don't know if we're leaving finisher grant work now. No, I understand all that. It's just you have to set where it already. If the guy's barn falls down, then you're liable for it, it seems to me. And it's one of the historic buildings in town. Um or not in town, but outside of those. Um it may be the oldest, who knows, but it seems to me you're ignoring the problem. That, that Dick has come to you and said, look, I've got a real difficulty here. I agree with John, there's culverts all over the place. That need to be replaced. And we all realize that we can't do it all of them. But Dick should move very high to the top of all this to get done.
But we did. I mean, we, we, we did the grant.
For next year.
No, no, we, the grant for this year, but we would, we were denied on the grant. Okay, so it wasn't that we were dragging our feet. We would, we did it out. It was gonna be done this year. Unfortunately, the money didn't come through for the grant. So hopefully, we're gonna do, we're gonna do it next year, whether we get the grant or not.
Well, that's right. We made a commitment. We're gonna do it next year to be done. So he is up on the. Priority list. He's on the top of the list.
Now, maybe, 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 and I just say maybe. When FEMA comes here, maybe we can get some litigation, because that's what they're supposed to do. When, when you have a COVID or you have a bridge or whatever it is that, that is causing damage. Because it's either undersized or it's in the wrong spot or whatever the reason is, FEMA is supposed to give you the money. To fix that so that they don't have to replace it year after year, year after year, it's called mitigation, but they don't do that. They just don't do it. They're annoying. So, Hinglebrook, you fix it, you fix, I don't know how many times you fix moments over there that are, that are undersized. Government pays for it, but they pay for it year after year after year. If they would have done it one time, they only paid for once. But that's. It, it's, I mean, there are so many other culverts and bridges, bridges, not the culverts that we. That we need to replace, but I mean. See, there's not enough money to do it all.
Sure, sure. With some places, global culverts, there must be a priority.
Yes, yes, we have that. We have that with, uh, with, you know, the capital budget.
And where is six on that list?
Third. Third? Well, it's the third one, the only one that hasn't been approved with a grant before a, the grant, well, the third one.
The third one.
And there's two of them that we have the grant money already for.
Okay, so those have been.
The G that we got first.
Okay, so six by contractor, if they've been bid out.
The contractor then has accepted, uh, only accepted it in towns and something bids from a contractor to replace it.
And they'll start this year.
There's both of them be done this year.
So six on third on the list.
Right. But next year really means after July. Of twenty twenty-four, right? If you have the COVID here and we're doing that. It's really, we have the materials, we have the graphic. I gotta buy the waste blocks to create the headers and it's our time. So if we come into spring and we don't have a lot of stuff, we're gonna go patch up and we can get on it. We can do it. If it has to go out to bid and have a contractor do it, you're, you're talking, that's when you're talking to thirty or five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I know. Other than that, it's the cost of the over. The materials to do the job.
Right.
You know, you have us, you own the book. It's just up getting there. We can do that.
Mike is doing, you think that he's done temporarily, give the vertical water from Dick's.
So not really.
You know, there's no river to go because as soon as it goes, comes downhill and goes to the left, it's going through his barn, which is what happened.
There's something to that burn or maybe like that.
Not really. Just the way the slope of the land is there. That's why we, that's why we have to put a, a six foot split over again. It's gotta be designed to accommodate the road and everything around it. Normally it would be a box over, afford a concrete box.
Yeah, we just can't even convert it as a boat, you know.
For the winter, next spring. Not for any other weather. Bad weather coming all the way.
Okay.
You know, just given. The weather, the rain amounts we're getting, the storms we're getting. It seems like every summer we're getting some kind of flood event. So we need to be more proactive in those culverts. Maybe we need to put bigger ones in. Cause it's not carrying water from the mountains. And the rivers.
The problem with that is you take the spring. And you start a state code for it. That's a whole different thing, because now you're gonna have to put a box over dinner. So a lot of those processing, even though they're good culverts, you can't just put it over it now. Now it has to be a box full. So you're talking one hundred and fifty thousand.
So that would be on stage, because we had major planning.
So when they take us the width of the spring bed that it is now. Then you have to accommodate for that. And a lot of times they won't do a steel pole. If it's a spring, it'll thrive better in the summer. We can get away with it. Something like that, it won't fly.
So, so that's impossible. Nothing can be done.
Be a box holder. And now there is, and all of the two in there is.
Yeah.
Free block now. We have a lot of those. I mean, sometimes everything can happen like that.
So bottom line, we need to take it better or more seriously. We'll look at that.
Of your interest, I absolutely. Yeah, and you'd be, yeah, there's a lot of them out there.
So the issue there is a budgetary issue, right? You don't have a fun and manic kind of.
Right, and that would be any of your capital budget.
So maybe that's not the problem. You do a vast group of stuff like that. You did ask the contractor. The problem is, you know, these things. They're not seven, they're not sixty thousand dollars. They're a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and forty thousand dollars and. We have a capital budget and, um, you know, there's, there's only so much we can raise in a, in a year. Well, the state, the state.
Yeah, it's not.
Everybody. The state is, is favorite. We, we already have, I mean, we, we have. We have a whole list of culverts and we have. And then done, ready to go. Just, you know, give us, give us a million dollars and we're getting all done.
Well, that's really the point, maybe, you know, you start saying a hundred fifty here, a hundred fifty there, then. You're gonna price almost everybody out of town. I could be able to afford to live there.
And not really a hundred fifty, it's like two hundred and two hundred fifty. They're, they're higher now.
I'm sure.
And, and you know, everybody's talking about culverts, but look at the roads. I mean, we're gonna do the, the thirty-five hill. That's two hundred and what, thirty thousand, was it? Thirty-five.
Uh, which road?
Thirty-five, the hills, down.
Oh, yeah.
Was it? How much was that?
How much was the bid for uh thirty-five?
Thirty thousand. Two hundred and five thousand? So they're two hundred and five thousand, but Townsend Road is, is, is coming to the point. One to one twenty-one is coming to the point. They said the village roads are awful. I mean, we're talking about probably another million dollars in payment, but. It doesn't, what does the state give us? They give us.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand dollars a year, big deal.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, from a, since this was brought up from a liability perspective, that's why. We have limited funds. And we have a broad discretion in what we can do. We have limited funds, not like we're. Blown in cash. So, I mean, I think it'd be a pretty tough case to bring. Being that we're doing the best we can for funds we have. And the state remarks not really being much of a concealer.
I mean, the price of the asphalt is, I can't say double for pretty near a dust mark. Yet we still get the same hundred dollars a year. So the state hasn't increased anything for us. Yet they're increasing it for everything else, clean water, regen plan and everything else. Public housing, but, but they don't do anything for the towns where they're interested. They don't help us one bit. And it's a problem.
And all of a sudden, we go to town meeting to double the budget. You know, you voted down anyhow. I mean, I know I will support it, but I mean, it's.
All right, Lawrence and Logan, do we? And Kim, you wanna talk about Lawrence and Logan?
I, we have, Jerry's saying, how can we in one's office that plugs in on whether it's a purity? And that outlet, you know, the battery backup for some reason, every Monday morning, apparently our backup runs out because for some reason they can't even figure out. What happens to that outlet over the weekend? So night to night for the five days a week we're here. It works and it, and we're falling and I commit a Monday morning, the power outlet apparently runs out of the battery backup and I'm completely need the system, which. Covers our fire protection and it covers our computers if we need to use flash up. They traced everything they could. They can't, they can't quite figure out why that outlet is being it. It also doesn't work anywhere on the generator. That's the only outlet that doesn't appear to be hooked to the generator, even though it's on the same surface in front of the others. So the only quick solution, I convinced spending two and a half, almost three hours trying to trace and figure that was technically put another outlet in. There's very few in that room anyways. Just come up through, they said it'd be soon enough to come up to the floor and put an outlet in right where our cybersecurity lock boxes. And I'll have a whole new outlet. They were supposed to give us an estimate and they got back to Oregon, did they?
Uh, I don't think it's in my email.
Okay, so we'll have to ask them again.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah, we can just.
You gotta, you gotta fix me out there.
So make a motion, you got fourteen thousand dollars to put downtown distance here, the building. Burning. Building there.
Can we place the outlet?
Um, so it was just replaced. I wasn't as if replaced, I mean.
I don't know.
We want, they'll set you up a big wall.
No. Just replace it, replace it. I mean, it's like. Just replace it, replace it, I mean, it's like, it's like. You know, it's like, uh, uh, maintenance. If if we had a leak in the roof, you you fix it.
Well, actually, what they said, because the new outlet, they put in four. Four section box on it, so our, our, we're gonna need to use a battery backup, which is directly into it.
For him, that's really, we're putting her in a little uncomfortable situation, that she didn't bring it out. Said someone probably ten dollar pro, so I I think it's reasonable.
Right, Kim, Kim, the taxes, will we taxes?
Wait, 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 we need a second.
So, taxes, let me tell you what the situation is, I've not got any tax bill yet to print. Um, uh, the company that we usually get from in the rural world had a hacking problem, so they lost all, and the all contacts, all. I was told I got approved today, and I was supposed to have them in hand today, but they don't, and they actually shouldn't have been mailed by Saturday. State statute says thirty days before the first payment is due, which is August fifteenth. So now that they don't have them, we've bypassed our, uh, our timeline. So I needed to ask the board to just change the date of the first installment due, I'm leaving the second inherent to the fourth installment as is. It would just mean I have. From the date that I mailed them, to have authority to change the first payment date to be thirty days out. Right now, I'm estimating that I might have them tomorrow, and I'm gonna have them by Thursday. Or if I'm really quick, and I get them tomorrow, I'll have them out by. Tomorrow afternoon. But if you leave the date open, that just to extend it to be thirty days from the first mailing. I did, I did speak to, uh, the L C team. They said it's actually fine, because we voted on quarter lease on our. In our town meeting, um, but because I'm actually changing the date to be best to run it by the board, trying to get authority from them to. Change the first quarter payment. And and as long as our money flow is okay, our money flow right now is fine, we don't need to look into changing it by seven to ten days.
So what do you want to change it to?
I'd like to leave the date open, as long as your motion just says. From the date of mailing, it would be thirty days.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if they're on date.
Okay, so who do you want to make that motion? Any other discussion we can, on, we can say it out. If not, all, all favors say aye, aye, opposed. All right, so we have, can we vote again on the meeting then?
Okay, I'd like to hand out an adjust proceed as a quarter by the standing. This is all, uh, line of credit, we need to bank the one million to help the homeowners flood, he said it. Um. Upon signing of the loan. We will have one credit available as of tomorrow. But. I'd rather, I didn't have a chance to give it to everyone while you're signing, so I was wondering if I sometimes. Can we take the people to look at it and then start with the office and sign the original, because I don't want to be the only one responsible for it, if they want to go in. Without being, or without somebody. We endure, it's pretty much mostly boiling plate. Same thing that we, um, borrowed from to do the town garage. And it's on the same basis as that, it's an open line of credit up to a million. Um, we pay interest of five point two eight. Only on the money we draw, and it's drawn by demand. And once we're done with the whole flood, we've used what we needed. We don't have to pay anything on it until July of twenty twenty four, and at that time, all monies would be due. Including interest. Hopefully, but probably not, we'll have our money back from FEMA, if not, we'll close it on July twenty twenty four and return it into a regular loan. Those people knowing that, um, what I remember, and I can tell you John, FEMA does not pay back interest, but we're getting on any kind of loan. So, I'm gonna hope that we can. Kind of move money around, use money to help start paying for this rather than. But the interest rate will be five point two eight if that.
Also for the loan, even. It's still five, five point twenty eight.
Okay, that, why are there two signature pages?
Why?
Why are there two signature pages?
There is actually four, one's a reservation, one's the actual note, and I think one of them is like a, uh, tax form. So I'll have the original in my office. If I can ask the board members, we got tomorrow and sign it. And as soon as it's signed, I can then scan it to the bank, but I, I mean, should have a copy to read through it.
It is a good chance you're not gonna get money from FEMA by July twenty four, so this will change into a loan at that cost.
I believe John Million is on the bright side, within that, you know, some of the larger culverts. Would be stopped everything up, so that's why I went to the million. There is one thing on the front page also that. They, um, you need to appoint somebody as authority to draw the funds, to call and draw the funds. Um, I can definitely, if you want to play with, uh, slot board number, if you want a person to call the bank and draw the funds, or if you don't. But somebody needs to be called, um. It's, I think there's a brain line on the first page.
Well, when, when they doesn't have the trouble to do that? I mean, it's like, or, I mean.
I think it would be fine, and that's usually what I've done in the past. Like what I did in the town garage, but, um, they want it in the minutes and appointed. By the board.
So you want a motion? That will accept the two, one, that correct?
I'm reading it, and coming in this.
And and you also want to be appointed as the contact person? So I want to make that motion.
I'll move, uh, to make him the point of contact for this load and to, uh. Want to bring that change, the, to read it. Go ahead, check it, wow, yeah, I I need to sign it tonight, Kim.
You need, you want to get one as well, as long as you read it.
All right. I mean, it's a board.
So, we have the motion, and like, so who's second, anybody? Don second. So all favors say aye, aye, opposed. Kim, I mean, if you have it ready, but no reason why we can't sign it tonight.
Okay, I can go get my original.
Okay, Don, let's see, it's all predictable rates for the nine, nine eleven, nine, seven nine, and a random.
Morgan has something to admit, and and there's a couple of meetings.
So I'll read them off and let me know if you have questions, and I'm gonna go back. So, a D four or a D five dozer. For a hundred and fifty dollars per hour. A tractor trailer dump. It would be a hundred and fifty per hour, one fifty. Skid steer, one twenty. About forty five hundred or fifty five hundred dump truck. For a hundred dollars. A ten wheeler dump truck for a hundred and twenty. A laborer for sixty five per hour. And to change the annual noise from forty dollars per hour to twenty five dollars per hour, and he would be on the funeral. He'd be as an employee versus a.
He's on the payroll because he shouldn't be down, yeah. What's the labor?
Do you want to speak on that, what's a laborer? The laborer.
And these are all Chris and, yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion, let Chris.
The one, again, they're aligned, what people will reverse support.
So all favors say aye, aye, and opposed. How you doing, right?
The only roads we have left to actually have wash holes in are Ketterhill. Anderson Road, um. The rest of them, we've gone around, built washes. They're gonna be going to clean out the edges, the ditches. And then we'll be, uh. Regraveling them. And then any stone line that has to get done will be done at that point. Uh. The blacktop, we will have to come up with a, someone to pave all the patches back in. Um, and then wrapping the river rangers, that's one of our bigger challenges, is there's only one place I can get wrapped, and that's over in Jamaica. So, that's entrusted by. So, they'll be doing that kind of shifts, they're gonna stockpile as much as they can, and then set it, and they'll have to stockpile more. Finish it up. So we'll, we'll be a good ones.
Now, all the, all the, the features that you did over the grants. There was stone line, but a normal one was. Signing stone line because they got washed out, we we, we, we do that, FEMA pays for that, yeah, yeah.
Now the debris coming up, could be started tomorrow. On the, where we're gonna run the bridges, we got a couple, we're gonna clean out underneath. Two out the valley, down here in the Fisher. There's much of brown.
If you happen to come across a port of fire, you know, that is.
No, that is down by crazy legs, white duck, it's now that one, so, it's all yours.
I I watched that, I watched that, hey, that was coming. Back at the town hall, it was teetering, and all of a sudden, it was.
Where parts have eroded, where there's no stone left.
What's that now?
Where the, where the, like. The south end of Saxon, down by.
Right.
That one came up again, and then it's still, it's still over, but it's not eroded more, you put stone in there at all?
Along the roadside, we. We're not gonna go out in the bushes out there, probably stone lined up, and that didn't erode on that side, right?
That's where, that's where the water started to come out.
Yeah, it came across the road.
Well, when. It washed off through where where the trees were.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of ground, I mean, that's just staying there.
Well, some of the ground, I'll let you, but. Clean it up, but what's the point, it sounds, we're just gonna fix the road, regravel the road. We'll pull it, we'll wait till the next one, give it a place to go.
I guess. Hoping that you're gonna be stoned by that thing.
If it's a big enough hole, and it's gonna be a problem, we will, but.
Because it came up really fast, and then. That is faster than FEMA.
Well, wasn't the stone there in four counties, so they're not gonna replace it.
Well, it's pretty good again.
You know, what you're doing is building mitigation. Well, see, that's, that's what we didn't do with FEMA. This is where FEMA's supposed to go ahead and give the legal litigation, so that then I can pay for it again, and again and again, but they don't do it.
It's a lot of money that the town has to pay out every year.
Well, happy, though, I think our road looks best as a terrace, it's pretty damn nice. Stone lined all the culverts, and everything looks nice.
Anything else, anybody wanna? Off the mic, everybody happy?
Thank you guys for all your. Thank the contractors that step up every time, Don, but down under, that's a lot of hell line.
Yeah.
You guys will do a great job, thank you.
Kim, you have anything on the question, Trevor?
Uh, no, just waiting for tax bills.
Okay, and, uh, personal committee, how many? None, we made almost, uh, other business. This is where if anybody has any questions on the board, you can. Talk to us.
That's under public comment.
No, I mean, they they could bring up if they have an issue.
Yeah, I think I had, um, the steerboard. Chair, Quentin Sun, Karen Morris. Um, but we do, still need, uh, another.
Uh, ask me, did you read my email, did you guys, anybody come down, decided set, and looking at the cameras down on Ketterhill, and I figured out the road.
And our map is over there too.
Oh, I know he was, and Saturday, I guess. And I don't want to speak where anybody else, if my house, unfortunately, the town we have is not. But it would have been really nice for somebody to just gonna say, be. Sorry to be capital, this is the plan, or really could be doing other things, but it really felt, it feels like. Um. It's business as usual, and it's really, there's some really bad stuff going on in here. The roads were here, living in that house, it's unimpressive, I can't. Um, and I noticed that in the corners, but, um, in pay taxes. But, um, I just, I didn't want to say that, I'm in trouble with my, my phone.
Yeah, it looks like a beach back there, like where the path is out.
Yeah, it's really a wire more, I don't want to speak with that.
That truck, I, I, I went up and tried to look in that truck, did that truck, the truck that's there, did I get flooded?
Yes, I think so, yes, I didn't get too many.
The, uh, highway is out, will be done in half a month, it's a few days, it's kind of good in my house. So.
That's true.
I think that some time to be done, see the kind of support that's needed, because. We're making it good. But it's really bad, uh, there's, there's, oh, right, and her house is close to G.
I did, you know, it is totally done, and, um, the foot down, we all keep getting out for, for test kits, so. So I was still playing around with doing your salt test kits for my mom. And my, we have, really, the water in my face, you know, that's what you said, it's bad, and Russell, it's worse than.
You know, the, the whole bank along there is really, uh, in need of mitigation, it's been fixed before by FEMA. I think that that is a precedent. We've got again, I know, and point out that they, I am fixing. But, um, there's also that holder that, that, those storm train holders, that, that comes from the wall field. Down path, between Hudson and Bull Creek, and have Mary Peter, please Martin, and then, and then into the. Uh, into the river, I passed it back. Uh, you know, there's about fifteen to twenty feet, if you walk down, fifteen to twenty feet of land that was eroded and debris. Uh, twisted the end of that storm grain. That's going to start backing up into, I think, in White Circle, and backing up. Look at that now.
But see, that's the window foundation, Cole.
I, I know, that's like, very controversial, that, you know why, I really don't want. You know, I want to point out that it's like, really problem solved, and 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 whoever owns it. It's problem to a bunch of landowners. My advocacy has always been not for the town and the road, or individual landowners, specifically. You know, disagreement between county government and the people in that, but I have the thirty five years in that. But man, you know, there, you know, I'm a lot, I mean, I started out advocating for my sister and for Rouse. But in addition, I'm thinking about all the people on that height that runs up to the wall field. You know, and and that, at least the end, it had height makes the end of the, the river on that. River I need to be sorted, cleaned up.
But to make things worse, that whole shot, it's all right. It needs to be replaced and that.
So put it on your list, you know, after you.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know where to go with all this, cause it's, it's not, it's not a town project.
Well, I came out of Congress. Last time there was a controversy, I was doing that cover, Women's Foundation stepped up and said they would fix it. Explicitly saying that it's not their cover. And I have some papers which I shared, I've done with this one board, that when I bought my house, that. That these were joined, the town and the Women's Foundation, it was a joint thing because they asked for permission to cross what's now my property. So I think it's not at all clear that that, certainly the Women's Foundation doesn't confuse that, that's their cover. And, and it will, Denise has a big hole in her yard that I think that. The town has to clean up. So at this point, I'm still.
Do they have anything, uh, in, in either images or we can check it out? Or anything to the Greeks, for our foundation, we can join, we touch them.
We have a little bit of documentation there, all that came through and landowner way back when, the Women's Foundation, because they didn't want it to work so the dollar. Or whatever you wanted to call it, the trend. And they wanted permission to go across everybody's property down through there, so that they put in a whole respect.
But the town has no agreement, but, but, I mean.
All back then, but that was. And I'm gonna try to find his mention in the document that's my property.
Well, if someone had, you know, would be great for us to take a look at it.
So are you suggesting each, are you suggesting with each landlord, contact the Women's Foundation and bring it to your attention or the town?
Well, the town, the town's struggling to help the Women's Foundation, that's not promised, but I don't know what we can do with it.
Especially if mitigation is happening on that side of the riverbank and includes that cover. It all would not happen because it doesn't belong to the town, and that, I mean, I'm. I don't know how we're gonna work on that part of the riverbank if the cover isn't decided. Because it's sticking pointed out and all twisted up and so. We can't just pile rocks on top of some.
Well.
It has to be a song.
Uh, the board will, will, I'll make sure that, that, that the board is in touch with the Women's Foundation and to see what, uh, what they're going to do about it.
I guess Morgan, Paul Foundation, let them know that they have a problem.
But if anybody has any documentation saying that it was a joint project, we need to have whatever, please come forward. And then Kim will take a look at it again and see if there's anything in our file records that indicates that. But my knowledge that that was an open ditch and the foundation, we want to look, we want ahead and, and could that hold it in? And cover it up.
I'd like to add to that, not only I mentioned the covert issue in Hopkiville that we had, but we also have an issue with the North Branch of the Saxons River. Affected many properties, including Will Bowles and Bruce, and what, so we want to know what's gonna happen with the North Branch. It's exposed soil, like in the both backyard.
Yeah, we lost, uh, about twenty feet in our towards our house and hundred feet along this stream then. And there's, it shouldn't cliff down and we stand on the edge, the round is coming into the stream with every. More rainfall, we have a huge ditch near a subject thing that just keeps sinking, I don't know what. The, not subject, um, that keeps sinking towards this cliff that just exposed, filled around. That you, um.
And the bridges there, like.
Yeah, so. We, a lot of people keep bringing up this already that it's too narrow and I think we have that the, um. The last inspection in October did say that what is too narrow, they would have to be replaced from three years ago. But so during the flooding, we watched the water back up onto our property and. It was hard, like, this art venture just. Gone, it was something just being, everything is gone. And then upstream on River Bruce's field, that. For what, if what it is from the field and it went straight through. Another person property that the field next to us, so our property was staying flooded from what happened upstream and the water backing up. From the bridge that we're flowing onto our property and so our house was completely surrounded by roughing water. And going on to the Bell Road into the town health update and so. This is a mess, it's extremely overwhelming. I don't know where to start, I had a file different on two-on-one and FEMA, but it. I don't have hundreds of thousands of dollars to maintain it, but even if I did, I don't think it should be. Our responsibility, individual property owners, to make sure integrity of the stream is there and also that. The bridge is safe because there's erosion all around the river too with the routine laws. Completely compromised.
Yeah.
There's none on our background, but also around the grid.
Well, you wrote around the bridge, this, that's only the town effects, but.
What about further downstream where it's exposed, is that something FEMA might step in and help with it or? We don't have that information, so we need, we can get that.
Her proof they take is may fall on the river. Go on up and look at her.
Well, can, can, is there any way that they can get in the same program? That we did for Patrick, uh, where they're in danger and they're all spending.
Yeah, if you see the pictures, I've seen there, there's this one pipe. That forms the whole pipes exposed.
You guys sent videos to me.
Yeah, we all sent video and.
Right, but I mean, there, there is, there is, there is this program that, I don't know exactly the name of it, but Patrick is, is part of using it. Where the house is invaded and.
Right, and by the way, that's worked really well, so the, the work of the design. I assume that's an eighty significant risk work, but actually they'll turn to work with. Who did that and the design was, was very good. And unfortunately, they covered a very small portion of the damages that, that occurred on that, on my property as a result of the cover very big. But enough adding all that, yeah, I think that that kind of work needs to be done all around time, I think John. And Rich and I walked around and we had a, the local ethic discussion about mitigation all over the. And I think that what happened on, on my property right there by the house. Uh, is a model for what should happen all over to your property and Ashley's app. And the Russian property and all of those places, but I don't know about. And I'm sure that it's just mine.
Well, maybe you should talk to Morgan, I think should maybe the, the name is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna do that, I think.
I think you were in our senior, yeah.
Program.
I'm not sure anymore. Yeah, I mean, certainly, was I necessarily even think I looked at.
Yeah.
Of the town.
Yeah. With, with the regional having a link to the problem, community and public assistance.
I don't know.
Because I know they sent out some information about.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you can contact with the, the WRC. And see if they want, want to have any programs.
I know first champion is usually the liaison.
Yeah.
They send out something, they sort of calls to the sources with public.
I, I, I don't, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen, I know that, um. The state has been devastated.
Yeah.
And, um. There might be some programs or some funds that, that could be available to, uh. Homeowners, because obviously there's damage to the infrastructure of the state and the town, but there's also. A homeowner, so maybe there's, maybe because of this, there'll be something that will come up that, um. You know, I haven't seen anything come through yet, have you, Morgan?
I haven't, but might not spend flooded, so.
I would like to see it and for the people reaching out to all the foundations around the state, all the charitable foundations. Who are not following, like FEMA is obviously running, following money in towns and, and roads. But man, I mean, all the charitable foundations need to be made aware of the. Devastation of personal lives in our neighborhood. So all of them, whether it's the Women's Foundation or the Community Foundations or whatever is out there. I think that, uh, there are landowners in practice who desperately need that kind of charitable attention.
Well, I, I also think, and I agree with you, but I also think that. Um, citizens need to write to their senators and their congressmen, ask the governor and, and, and because.
Starting here with the town, right?
Because these people, these people to bring there, and, and I tell you that, cause I was involved in a, a video conference, uh, a year or so ago. About roads for the budgets and these senators had no clue on what is, what is, the town has to do or what the cost. Of protecting roads are and whatever, and so they voted not to increase any, any other aid to the towns. And these, these people need to be lit, opened up or voted out and get some money in there, quite frankly. Alright.
It's a good idea.
And, and I, I mean, honestly and truly, uh, you know, we can only do so much through the VLCP and whatever, but. The individuals, the, the, the people who are elected, you elect, uh. They're the people that you need to contact and they're the ones that.
We like the board as well.
We can always do something for the town.
For the town too.
Yeah, you can ask the head for the residence.
No, I mean, there's no question, we, we've done that and we've decided to do that, but, but it also. Do their senators.
We don't do that until I can get any more answers later, I mean.
Hey, I can't, you bring the fix to my yard and I don't do that anymore, because. The whole road is walking out, like it.
It was over the bridge.
It backed up, it washed over the bridge, it washed over the road. The, the grid, it didn't work right now, my, my house is vulnerable, Holyfield is vulnerable right now.
But this isn't the first time this happened.
No.
Prevented it, it's like, but I think it says.
Can't help it. And that's the problem. We can fix the problem, the thing, thing would, would mitigate because the town has, has, it's costed town. What, it cost the federal government money and they keep redoing the same thing like we're old.
Well, after Irene, the person who used to own my property paid for it out of pocket. And that's just not in my situation, everything here is, I can't come here and beg your money or. Write senators and people, like, this is very, it's like, nothing's gonna change, if nothing is changing, this is gonna keep happening in Hopkiville. We have to do something about this.
When you?
You know, just asking how we can get on a list, FEMA to buy you out, how does that happen, is the town advocate for that? Or is the land or how?
I wish it here, when, when Irene, when they had the buyouts of the village pump and how, how does that work? I saw, I saw something through on my emails that there is a program.
Yeah.
Tell people about this, because he made it to the end and stuff.
Bill, Bill, Bill said that he will, um, Nicole, Bill, I, I want to talk to you, Bill's happy, he said he's happy to talk with you. And he knows more about the FEMA, he's worked with FEMA, he knows more about FEMA than any of us.
But our sons, the two, the two of them, what is that?
People buy out, that's a very, their criteria, what they're gonna buy out or what they're gonna. And it pretty much has to be, the house will no longer upon foundation sort of thing.
Right, well, they would like nothing more than to flatten those two houses that are down here now, the village pump was the first one. And in a row, it's a riverway, Michael Markey's told us today, it's not a flood plain, it's a floodway, so it's gonna keep happening and happening and that. How do we get on a list, to get it on the bottom of that?
I don't know how you do it, but there is a way to do it because they, they, they did it during Irene, so. Um, we can find them.
That's the word with FEMA, it's including, um, being the decision. Yeah. It was at that time, the FEMA makes all the decisions on it and they want to go apply for, it's only for first round is all homeowners. And then if there's enough money left in the FEMA program, should they might offer a second round, and then the second round is only the second one, we start to give it like rock all in the village. Um, Nancy Middleton. But the first round was the one that went down the river and they got replaced like immediately. And then the rest were deposed.
But in that context, I mean, actually, town loses the tax, the tax revenue from this property. Maybe one of the things that, that is lying, like, so if you lost all that land, I mean, she still would be paying taxes on it too, right? That's right, so that's, yeah, so maybe the, maybe they'll just do, they can in there, but I mean, come on, what we're really seeing is. Many, many people's homes, and that's tax dollars, by the way, are being damaged and diminished by the failure to mitigate. And I think that we know that mitigation doesn't back work, I think that the. Twenty feet of wall that I am over in my house tells me that. So mitigation, hey, is the, is the big plan, but I think town has to get behind it. And I'm not saying that you should mitigate these things in one year, so yeah, you got a fifteen million dollar private. You, we just need a plan put in place that says, this is how we're gonna deal with it and then knock it off and knock it off. And we've been in a reasonable box for sure, that's why I think that's what we got, that's what. Living through all that.
Yeah, but I, I can, I can assure you that the town fights with FEMA on mitigation. That, that's something that, um, we try to do because we, we know what the problems are, but we have not been able. To get FEMA to mitigate, that's the problem.
And on the federal level, the people who represent us are, who are congressman and senator, is that her? Who was, who would help us argue okay with FEMA?
I don't know.
Yeah, so Bernie's in, in blood, but it's Marshall. They are.
He said it now.
Yeah, very close, whatever, all those. But then. Bring them down, let them come in and push water on passing, they didn't like I did with me days. And tell me that we don't need mitigation.
Yeah, FEMA is not gonna talk to people.
They made a talk, they talked about that, I think that all that is, is, uh, you know, it's, it's important. And I'm gonna have to see more of in town, having those voices that they're making.
No, you're, you're correct. That's why I keep saying, it's proactive stuff we can do stuff to prevent.
Kind of chain come down in the middle of the day and talks at the library about, I don't know what, you know, thunder come down to talk about what.
This, the, the, does somebody want their home bought out though, that's the view of your own bought out, I feel?
You know, at this point, I'm totally consider, this is the second time I've done it and. A hundred year close that are now ten years apart, I can't keep doing it much, as you say, I don't have the deep pockets to keep replacing myself. And so either something has to be done to mitigate the way that river is flooding, which has changed over the years. Um, and I have heard that there were some landslides in the river that were contributing to that and other stuff. That couldn't be cleared for what, you know, long story, but ultimately, if the, uh, AMR decides that the riverway. The floodway is more valuable to the lived environment than the people who are in the lived environment. Then that will ultimately have to be the answer, because we can't keep having the house replaced. Um, this is the second separate system. And that I have, so, you know, it can't keep going on, so, so do I want to leave breath in someone else's FEMA car?
But there was, there was a time, many, many years ago, that you could go in the river and remove the trees, you could go in and remove the, but that's, you can't do that anymore.
I under, I understand that's AMR's position and so, and that's why I said. And, and all of the state agencies, all of the state and all the federal government. But I can write all I want to whoever I want, I'm an individual, they do not listen to me. I get it that you guys are also frustrated because they, they don't wanna listen to you either, but you definitely have a bigger place than I have. And so as we, you know, you're asking the question, do I want my house bought out? Part of the answer has to be that if the state can't be convinced that the lived environment includes the people in the lived environment. As well as the flora and fauna and course of the river, then there will be no choice for any of us who live along these rivers. If there's no mitigation, and some of that mitigation isn't just about moving stones in the river, some of it's about clear cutting higher up the hills. If there's no mitigation and some of that mitigation isn't just about moving stones in the river. Some of it's about clear cutting higher up the hills. Some of it's about going back to the source of these streams and being. Why is it suddenly the case that the surveying is so much higher? But and these are, these are big questions. But ultimately, yeah, practical. How often can you have your house flooded? Before you have to say, I can't live here anymore. And honestly, I can't afford to buy another. I can't just say, oh, I'm gonna leave this house and go buy another. I can't sell that house. That house, if you have to buy full land insurance for that house. It is either unaffordable or I have to find someone with such deep pockets. That they don't care and I know that for a fact because I was going to sell my house. About about five years ago and the buyers who were looking at it as soon as they called the flood insurance costs. Wouldn't take the house. So in addition to that, the aspect of my house really should go down. The because it's certainly not what everybody thinks it's worth. And so again, the town's losing any tax revenue and I don't want to speak for you, but I think we're similar boat in in that part. Um, so see, these are not simple matters at all. When you ask if we want to get rid of our houses, no, we'd love to do. But, yeah, what you gonna do?
Well, I I I certainly, I I understand, I give you. And we're just frustrated because they don't listen to us. Trust me, they don't listen to us. And um when you, when the federal government, you can't, you can't reach them. It's just impossible. And and I can tell you that John and uh Bill Curran's. Um and. Others here in town who deal with FEMA have tried. With no success whatsoever. To explain that we need to have this fixed mitigation and they just flatly say, it's not broken, we can't fix.
So. And that that diagram was, I don't know, I hear you from A and R, I'm not sure, John, you know, kind of who gives permission for. Uh contractors to work on the riverbed. When we hired that down. You know what I'm talking about or the. So he needs to be contacted, you know, after our agreements, they had uh waived the a lot of the rules and regulations. They need to do that again. They've already done that. They have. So why hire, perhaps you hire is a contractor to.
You can get the river, yes.
It's not an issue.
Yeah.
Well, the contractors. Even after they went to.
So he said, I can't go down there if I get that permission.
Oh, contact Scott Jensen, but you'll be, I have the the letter from the governor in my truck. It says that you hired him.
How long will that be in effect?
I think it's over October twenty fourth.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, years ago, we used to have a, we used to have a budget to clear trees out of the river. Can't do that anymore.
And well, that was good.
I know it was good, but they won't let you do that now.
Well, let's let's try to get back to that, but.
Yeah, um, I think I'm Robinson and Mary Robinson, we um. We bought it a long house that um fifteen, sixteen, nine pounds ago.
Right.
And after it was flooded, the basement and I reading. Uh and then there was some work done along the river. Um. We did not get flooded this time. The the work that was done. Pretty much. We'll save our house. But there was a lot of erosion in the yard. There was, there was some areas of the river that had corroded. Now, and we would like to. Do whatever we're permitted to do to reinforce that so that when the next flood comes. It still holds up. It held up this time, but it was still quote. Um, but I we don't have the process. We don't know, like, I'm hearing now. Is that Scott Jensen that we need to contact to get the permission? To do, because we've talked about doing anything before. The contractor goal is that they couldn't do.
Yeah, well, you can, you can only do.
What we can do and and we don't know where to turn. So that's why we came to this.
Well, why don't you, she Morgan, she can give you all the numbers, but right now, like what the governor has said, you can go and fix this. But that expires at the twenty fourth of October.
So does it expire that the work has to be done by then or the permission has to be?
That I don't.
The permission was granted until then unless circumstances.
So I would have to find, you would have to find somebody to do it by that and then. And we assume we had to pay for it, so we don't know any resource unless others know what resources to do then. Have entered.
Well, I I mean, I I think it'd be, I mean. I think you may be finding a contractor by that time. I mean, uh, it's it's, you still got over a month.
The way your petition to be finished, so I don't.
We have to hire a contractor and put Rick around if you.
You look like you were gonna say something.
With me?
Yeah, no.
And what's the work you?
Well, we want to be informed, but with the the work that is already done along the end of the path, we don't, we don't know what we're allowed to do.
Well. Jay Gretter just did work at my house.
I don't. What after?
Before, he got the permission from the state to call him down.
Before? Okay, so I'll just talk to Jay then. I mean, he knows.
Yeah.
So the major staff and stonework that you had done. I can't, I can't. You had, you had some stonework done before this. We did, I think some of it did. John Evans did it. Uh, we didn't do it. Was that for the town putting that show it up? No, I don't think the town did. I supplied it with John. We just um, we're not, you know, barely do and we don't know the rules and the law to. We we weren't law. What we we asked, we give out some work before and he said, I was supposed to contact somebody, I'm sure we get permission. And I don't remember who that person was. Um. And we, it's all kinds of flooding the time, but it's still. There.
But he he does, he he is part of the emergency management team. So uh which Morgan is and whatever, but but I you can, you can, I mean, right now that opened up, you can. You can get and fix whatever needs to be fixed to protect, protect your house from future damage. So you need to act quickly.
If you have a list of contractors, I'm happy to do that. Okay. Once you reach out to Daniel and share, and if he's busy, I'm sure he has a list of people I could refer it to too. Okay. And I I only say that because there's not just one option. Yeah, right. There's, there's other people.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Warren, can you list again? Like the contacts that they need to have. Uh in their situations. Uh and even the charitable organizations. I mean, we have Ames Hope. Does anybody know about Ames Hope? I mean, I said New England. Yeah, the the public know that.
Yeah, so. I can do that. I was gonna be first. Um. So a lot of you know that the FEMA, FEMA grant through G, G, they reached out to me and. Said there's tons available for homeowners um that have pump issues. Uh molds, they'll do a plant out for water damage. Um, I haven't got hold of Bill Watson yet to sit down and see the details on how that application works. Um, so I have to follow up with them and see the process of how to apply for that, what the requirements are and how to go forward with that. So.
Yeah, I have a part of the emergency management, uh, can be anyway, so she could help you, whatever.
So how much is that? You know, first of all, they were thinking that. They probably had tons up to probably twenty thousand.
Kind of got a total for like, okay, that's all I started with.
Yeah. I mean, it's not much, that's why, you know, and. I mean, listen, everyone's night, I mean, you know, I had a pretty good list of what we can. Figure out and go for.
Right, and and also, you know, I have people, I mean, each contractor and and if you need work, you can certainly contact them and there are others. All right, so anyone make a motion to the judge, I guess? Well, there is there I.